There were you.
Yeah. Yeah, I can do that.
Unstuck, again. She, she does play guitar.
I know, I'm here.
I think. Well, for Halloween. It's twice been. Is that what you, is that what you're figuring?
Do you have a feeling?
Please. Actually today, I had to read. So my, I have. Thought COVID. Get the vaccine. Uh. Today we got. We're finally out of. Man.
Very.
I see. I know. He's been like hyperventilating and crying about it. Unfortunately. On the cloud or on the bed. They program like credit. They're like, we're getting the vaccine. And he's like.
Already have.
Yeah, it was.
I was gonna say. That'll make.
Yeah, the other, the other shoe went first. One, three, four.
Did it help?
There.
We had lots of volunteers, but it was a drive. No. It would be. I was saying. I want.
I couldn't really. Yeah. Oh, we love.
Great.
Jen.
I like the, the new color scheme that we're having.
Yeah. All right, are we ready? Okay. Um, I'm going to go ahead and call to order the Hood River City Council meeting of December 13th, 2021. And so if you could silence your cell phones or turn them off, if you have them, please. And I'm going to do the land acknowledgement first and then we'll do the pledge. As we meet here tonight, let us all remember that today we are stewards of land that has been home to indigenous peoples for thousands of years before the recent arrival of the European heritage dominant culture. We honor this land's ancestors as we go about our business today. We'll do the pledge.
Our pledge leans to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, indivisible, infinite and ever.
Okay, business from the audience is first. And. I've got four people to speak this evening. Um. Two of these. Um, Reed and Judy Simpson, you guys are up first, but we're also having a hearing, I think, um, regarding. The issue you may be speaking about, so you can speak now or you can speak during the actual public hearing. That, that's up to you. Either, either way, you'll be on record for the public hearing part if you speak during that part as it, you know, connects together. Um, and that public hearing will be right after business from the audience. So you won't have to wait a long time if you'd like to wait to speak then. Okay. All right. Um, so the next person signed up is Dan Ball. Go ahead, Dan. And if you've been here since we have this new setup. Just there, and then when you get ready to speak, you need to touch the edge of that little disc there and it'll turn green and then we'll be able to hear you. There you go.
All right, well.
Three minutes.
Good to see you. Yeah. Uh, and I would start out by saying this is regarding the city tree committee status and the Tree City USA recognition that Hood River has, has gotten in the past. And you did receive a hard copy of this, so basically I would be reading it, but what the heck? Uh, so the current application deadline for the Arbor Day Foundation's 2021 Tree City USA Award is December 15th, day after tomorrow. Uh, to qualify for the Tree City USA Award, several criteria must be met, including an active city tree committee and a plan for an Arbor Day recognition activity typically in April. These criteria were not met in 2021 for the following reasons. As the COVID pandemic restrictions increased in the spring of 2020, the current Hood River, or the, the Hood River City manager at the time indicated that the tree committee would not be allowed to meet either in person or via Zoom until further notice. This order effectively curtailed the activities by the tree committee. The com- the committee did, however, successfully apply, apply for, and Hood River received the 2020 Tree City USA Award by the Arbor Day Foundation, one of 69 cities in Oregon to receive this award. As meetings contended to be prohibited by the city, pre-committee activity basically ceased, and I resigned from the committee in March of 2021. The, the committee did meet one more time in May of 21, uh, but to my knowledge, has not met since. Since the criteria have not been met for a Tree City USA Award, it's apparent that Hood River does not qualify, uh, for this award, uh, for this year of 2021. This would have been the 10th year for Hood River to receive the award. However, please note that the war, this, this award can be applied for in subsequent years if the criteria are met. I do continue to be concerned for the welfare of our Hood River urban forest, the conservation of trees during urban development and construction, and recognize the absolute necessity of trees for the quality of life in our town and for the mitigation of climate change. The city's active participation in protecting and enhancing our trees is increasingly essential. So thank you for hearing me out for that.
Thank you, Dan. Right, next we have, um, White Buffalo. Wanna, wanna say? You didn't write it down, so I'm just trying to remember it.
Yeah. Good evening. I forgot, while I wasn't able to print you a copy this time, but I'll get that to you later. Dear Hood River City Council, it is my understanding that the businesses in the state of Oregon have the right to choose if they will require a vaccine passport to do business. Here goes history repeating itself, segregation all over again. Now, instead of your skin color, it's your vaccination status. If anyone out there thinks this is a good idea, I just wanted to remind you that for every action, there is a reaction, and segregation breeds the possibility of civil war. When someone has refused goods, services, and jobs because of their personal medical decisions, tensions will arise. Which do you think will harm more people, COVID-19 or civil war? The virus has caused enough damage already, let's not let it also cause civil war. Please respect my medical privacy and I'll respect yours. Say no to the vaccine passport requirement. May we all live peacefully in harmony with each other. Amen. And I have a P S. in the letter, says Merry Christmas. Everyone gets a Hood River Oregon souvenir wine opener. Please don't forget the carbon footprint of your wineries and breweries and the threat of alcoholism on humanity. Alcohol is a killer, date rape drug, tool for taking advantage, and a great destroyer of families. It's about time the city of Hood River stopped encouraging people to use alcohol. Your loose laws and dense population of businesses capitalizing on alcohol production and consumption has turned the sacred healing mecca of Hood River into a drinker's paradise. I'm not sure how it became this way, but now it must change. Cheers to big changes in 2022. Who is going to provide the land and resources for the sweat lodge, longhouse, and trading post in Hood River? We must make way for the medicine so mass healing can begin.
Thank you. Right, um, that's our business from the audience this evening. And now we will go to the public hearings, and I need to read a script on that before we get started. This is, um, this is the time schedule for a public hearing regarding the designation of surplus and sale authorization for certain city-owned property and property interests located at Hazel and Sherman avenues. The hearing was published in the Columbia Gorge News on December 8th. If you wish to speak at tonight's hearing, please make sure that you have signed in with the city recorder. This is for resolution 2021-17, property and property interest surplus and sale. And I do have, um, Simpson signed up. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on that subject? No, okay. Um, so we'll go ahead and have our summary from staff, Will Norris.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor McBride. And I have some visuals that I think could help. Okay, so I'll pull those up. And so tonight's public hearing is on a surplus designation and sale of property and property interests located in this geographic area on your monitor. Uh, these six, uh, the six parcels located in this dotted line were declared, originally declared surplus and sold by the city in 1990. So. Uh, the purchase price was $25,000 per parcel with 6,250 down and 10 annual installments of $1,875. Let's see, the, uh, parcels along Hazel were sold with a 20-foot easement along their southern, um, southern border for potential future widening of Hazel Avenue. The, uh, homes were then built across the easement in, uh, 1994 to 1997. It is unclear whether the builder knew about the easements and simply, uh, chose to risk future widening of, uh, Hazel Avenue, or whether or not they were, uh, not cognizant of the, um, easements at the time. Um, but the, uh. Um, okay, and then the, uh, two parcels to the north were returned, uh, to city ownership in 1993 before finishing out the, uh, contract installment payments. Uh, presumably, um, the owner thought they had no economic value at the time. As they're a very steep grade, however, we're, uh, seeing things like this being built on in Hood River today, and a appraisal of these two parcels. Uh, uh, in January, estimated a value of $470,000. Removal of the easements is anticipated to, uh, add between about $10,000 to $45,000 of value per parcel, uh, to the properties along Hazel. So, uh, the resolution that we're having a public hearing on tonight and then will be, uh, take an action on in regular, uh, the regular, uh, business meeting, uh, authorizes sale of these, uh, properties along Sherman as well as, um, the property interests remaining on the Hazel properties. Uh, it also authorizes city staff to add, um, uh, covenants and restrictions and easements, uh, to the Sherman, uh, adjoining part, uh, properties before sale to achieve two objectives. Uh, the first is to protect the first row of trees along the second, uh, Second Avenue stairs, uh, so that we had a surveyor look at the drip line for those trees and it will, uh, 25-foot no build ease, uh, CCNR actually would be the case in this, this case, would protect those trees and help minimize impacts to stair users. And then to the east side, uh, there's a home, uh, uh, built right along the property line. And so this survey shows that, um, basically the, the overhang of the roof and, and panel, kind of an electrical stubout panel are right on our property line, and then the, uh, stairway, access stairway is on city property. And so the intention is to, uh, uh, also include an access easement so that as long as that structure remains, the property owners would continue to have, uh, maintenance access to the east side of their home. Uh, we understand that, uh, the property owners to the, uh, west there may also want to purchase, uh, maybe a section of our property, and that's certainly something that would be authorized, um, under this resolution as well. Um, but at bare minimum, uh, we would be wanting to, uh, uh, protect at least access rights to, um, existing structures. Um, so that's essentially what the resolution in front of you is today is to declaring these, uh, surplus, allowing staff to, to negotiate and execute sales and allowing staff to place CCNRs and easements on these properties. Uh, we can ask questions during the, the regular meeting as well, or go right into public.
Um. You guys have any questions now? I mean, we can do questions later too, but we won't get into any discussion until after public. Or we can just do public testimony first. Public, public testimony, okay. We'll do that and then we'll probably have you back up for more questions, Will.
Sounds good.
Okay. Um. So now we will take public testimony. Is there anyone who, from the public who wishes to speak? We have a couple of people, okay? So these are the rules, uh, for public testimony. No person shall speak without first being recognized by the mayor. Each person will be allowed five minutes to speak. No person shall be disorderly, abusive, or disruptive of the orderly conduct of the hearing. There should be no audience demonstrations such as applause, cheering, displays, signs of conduct disruptive of the hearing. Such conduct may be grounds for immediate termination of the hearing. No person shall present irrelevant material or unduly repetitious oral arguments. Mayor, other city, other council members, and with the approval of the mayor, the city manager, or any other officer or employee of the city may question any person who submits oral argument. We'll go ahead and now take public testimony, testimony. Prior to addressing the council, please state your name and address. So, um, let's see, Judy, would you like to go first? So just your name and address first.
Uh, Judy Simpson, 209 Sherman.
Okay.
Um. I'm going to say we, because I'm also speaking for my husband, or he might add to this, I don't know, but, uh, we want to reiterate our concerns about the property line between lots 200 and 101. Our house is over the property line on lot 101. We had a meeting this morning with representatives and we discussed an easement that would protect our access to the house as well as replating the lot lines to allow us to purchase an area protected, to protect the house. We are concerned with potential damage from a large dig that would be required for town house developments. The house at 209 Sherman, as well as the trees along the main city steps have been there for many years. These existing constraints will affect the value of lots 101 and 100. Uh, we were insured that the property would not go up for sale until these issues were addressed. Thank you.
You. And Reed, would you like to speak or? Okay, okay, all right. All right, um. I just want to make sure there's no one else that wants to speak. I don't see anyone here. Um, so the public hearing is now closed, and so city council will deliberate or ask questions of staff, um, to do our deliberations, um, regarding, uh, surplus declaration and sale authorization, which would be done during our regular meeting. And just to, I want to clarify this just a little bit, and if you want to clarify it to Dan or Will, this is just an authorization, this is not selling the property, this is just declaring it surplus property. And there will be a lot of process between us saying that this is surplus property and discussions and easements and all those kinds of things being, um, added on after we declare it surplus. So this is not the final thing and it's going to go out the door. Is that, have I got that correct?
That's true, and it's also your chance to kind of talk about what constraints you want to add to this. I mean, staff has recommended a couple, you can say yes or no to those or others, or to kind of give guidance to staff who's going to go forward and negotiate these. So if there's something important, now's the time to articulate that.
Okay, great. So, um, maybe questions for Will? Do people have questions? Mark, you've got a question?
Sorry, I have a couple of questions. Um, one is. We're, we're doing a public hearing now, and I don't.
Can you turn your mic on?
To get us into, I mean, are we, are we approving the resolution?
Oh. So.
Thank you.
So, we're in a public hearing now, and then we're going to get out of this and then approve the resolution. I just, I'm not clear.
That's the way you always do it.
Is it? But we, we made some motion coming out of public hearing, right?
Yeah, I mean, I don't understand, it wasn't my idea, but this is the Hood River way to do these, have the hearing and then, then in the, in the regular part of the meeting.
Okay.
And take action, but.
But, but it is the resolution to 21-17 that we're gonna.
Yes.
That's related to this hearing, okay. Um, and then my other question is, um, what assurances did the city of Hood River provide to the, uh, folks at the, you know, the property at the west end of the Sherman properties over, over the years, um, that, that would make putting that easement as a, as a good thing to do?
Yeah, uh, no assurances made, uh, simply trying to create the best outcome for all people involved. Um, so, uh, we let them know that, uh, you know, as written, the resolution for your consideration expresses the, uh, explicit intention to provide an access easement, um, but that's not because of any historical commitments made.
And I, I think that easement was, um, for instance, if they needed, needed to get a ladder up there to paint their house again, or they needed to replace some siding, or if they didn't have some kind of an easement, they wouldn't be able to do that, is that correct?
Correct, and maybe for clarification, Council examiner, were you speaking about the Sherman, uh, properties, or were you speaking about the Hazel easement?
Uh, the Sherman property.
Oh, then, yes, correct, correct. It just.
The people that are here.
Yep.
Essentially, the paint itself is the line. It's the property. Yeah, and access. Uh, and the stairs are on our property, so. Um, so if they need to be on the exterior of their house, they need to be standing on our property.
And then I guess the last thing is, where, where I, I read through the whereses and I don't see the easements carved out in here, are they not yet?
Uh, and going into the resolution, they're in the now, therefore's, so the, um, real meat of what the resolution is saying. Yeah, in the, yeah.
For the result. Gotcha, so not defined in a map form, but, but the, the goal of it.
Subjective, correct.
Thank you.
But if we got down to where, um, we were actually going to sell it to someone that might not be them, um, that where they need the easement, then we would actually have physical descriptions of exactly where it was at that point.
Exactly, this is our starting gun to start drafting up those legal descriptions.
Okay.
Once we know the policy objectives of the council.
Okay.
Jessica, a question on the, the ones on Hazel Avenue or on the maps that you showed, the house in the driveway, even like the property line, oh, a piece of the house in the driveway is outside of the property line?
Mm-hmm.
Like in the right of way?
Correct, they had, uh, they went through a planning approval process for that.
Oh.
In the, in the 90s. In the, in the nineties.
Okay, okay, I was just curious about that. So that was a variance process, correct?
Uh, that's my understanding.
Okay.
Can I follow up on that?
Yeah.
So was, do they have an easement to have a portion of the house in, well, I guess the city property or what is that?
You're talking about Sherman or Hazel?
It's a Hazel, so there's the portion of the house, like there's a bunch of the house in the, what, twenty-foot easement that we're going to give up, and then there's a, a part of the house that's south of the easement.
Yeah, they basically have a.
On someone else's property.
A runway plank, like a, like a gangplank, uh, so that they can access their house. Um, it's a.
But whose property is part of their house on?
Uh, so the border of their house is right on, uh, their property and then the, uh, access decking.
Can you pull the?
Yes.
I know, I think sometimes it's just like the, the map lines and the picture don't necessarily line up.
Right, I mean, it's, it just seemed like a dramatic not line up.
Um, okay, sorry, give me just a second.
Awesome, okay, so, uh, the way I'm reading that is the, the yellow line goes to the southern end of their property and then there is house below their property.
Yeah, I, so I can grab the, uh, planning director. He's going to be best able to answer this question. I understand it, it went through a whole, a whole planning process at the time to get these approvals.
Okay, so they have whatever easements or whatnot they need.
I don't know if easement is the right word.
I think it's a variance, it's a variance, isn't it, Dustin?
Yeah, it's not an easement there. Uh, they would have the necessary approvals. Uh, the variance were granted for four lots. Two of them acted on it to build this, in this location. And then during the permitting process, there was a caveat written that, uh, the developer and builder need to be aware, um, there may be easements on there. This approval does not overturn any easements that may be in place at this time. So it was written out there with a touch saying, be advised, this does not grant your encroaching. Uh, but these two houses were built per plan, per allowance with review.
Okay, the, the portions that are to the south, where the cars are parked in that roof area, that's, was approved through a variance process.
Yeah, the, to the south would be, uh, license agreement because it's actually in the right of way, so temporary use. So once you get outside of, fee simple property into the right of way, then it becomes an engineering request, the ability to use, uh, the right of way. So that is, that's kind of a different permission.
But they have that.
They do.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do you hear Tim?
So Will, um, can you, uh, just clarify the potential option to buy, buy the, the, uh, the, uh, easement or whatever it is that you were talking about?
Yeah, uh, just, uh, so, uh, the market, the market value of these parcels was in, was, um, impaired at the time, uh, based on the, uh, existence of this easement. So removing the easement will, uh, increase the value of these parcels. Um, the city has, uh, affordable housing objectives, uh, you know, places that, uh, we need funds to address, so, uh, before, um, uh, so the resolution essentially tries to obtain, uh, obtain value for the city for the increased value. That's going to accrue to these properties once the easement is removed. So, uh, we're requesting compensation for city action to remove the easements.
And also, you know, are any of the things that we're talking about tonight, what does that do to the kind of the bottom line for the sale price? Of the, of the properties?
Of the, um, so this is most valuable for the undeveloped parcels. Uh, I'm not sure if they will sell. Uh, I understand they, uh, they came to us requesting, uh, that easement be removed and it's, I, my understanding is that was part of a sale process. So, um, I don't know if it was a mandatory part of the process or not, um, but it appears that, uh, to facilitate a sale, they want the easement removed. Thank you.
Any questions?
I don't think, I don't think so. I think, I guess, maybe I do. The second to last resolution clause. I think it's implicit and it doesn't say it, but I think, just to make sure that the folks testifying tonight and others in mind it be a concern. My understanding is that before, you know, upon reaching satisfactory terms of sale, it says the city manager is authorized to take your actions. But following some kind of public engagement with city councils, there's another opportunity for discussion.
Yeah, that, that is not the intention that's written into the resolution, so if we want to change that, uh, this is something we could do via, uh, amendment during the, the regular city count, uh, city council meeting. Uh, right now, this allows us, uh, with the direction that's outlined in the resolution to bring this all the way to fruition.
For this, are you talking about for the, the sale of the lots, the, the lower lots by Sherman and any easements that would be added to those, whether it would be for the trees or for access to their place and also to remove the easement above. You're talking about all of those together.
Correct.
In this, okay. But you were wanting us to come up with dollar amounts tonight? No, just, okay.
Nope, uh, and just basically saying within these four corners of policy direction, staff is, uh, authorized to fill, fill in the blanks and, and execute and get it done.
Okay, so that would be a point we can discuss. Yeah, go ahead, Megan.
Um, sorry, if we're, if we're talking about the resolution, um, the second resolved, um, you know, like the easement for purposes of tree preservation, um, is it going to be written specifically about tree, I mean, I guess I'd like twenty-five feet to just have space between, you know, building and stairs would be my interest versus the like, you know, the trees may or may not be there in two hundred years just because trees are trees. Um, like, is it going to just be written as, like, no build easement or is it specifically about the trees themselves?
No, no build easement of any kind.
Great, thank you.
Yeah. It was calculated based on the drip, um, uh, you know, drip pattern of those, those specific trees, but the intention is also the overall policy is to, um, keep that user experience for the stairs. So the rest of the foliage in that area is important too.
Okay, great, thank you.
More questions for? Okay, right, um, so we, we have a resolution in front of us. We've had our public testimony and that has been closed, so now we can go ahead and deliberate whether we're good on the resolution or would like some changes or where we are.
Or that would be sent back to the, the regular meeting.
You, okay, should we just, okay, well, we've closed the public testimony. Um, should we leave this open then until we get to regular meeting or what? To make the, we close the public testimony, we close the public testimony.
Close the public testimony portion of the hearing. You'll, in the regular session, you'll deliberate and decide what to do and, and take action possibly on the resolution. So that's all that's left. But it's, it's, there's nothing to hold open. You've, you've done the, the public hearing that's required.
Okay. All right, so the, so the public hearing is closed and we will, um, deliberate on the surplus declaration and sale authorization during the regular meeting. Okay. Um, so now, uh, work session. I don't see anything on there. Did we have any changes? Do we have any other work session items we needed to do? Nothing, okay, all right, great. Um, so we'll go ahead and open the regular council meeting. Um, any agenda additions or corrections? Okay, uh, consent agenda. There's several things on there. Does anyone need any of those, uh, removed?
Um, Mayor, I have two edits to the minutes. I don't know if it needs to be pulled to make those or.
Um, are they substantive or we could pull them and do them on the next meeting?
I mean, they're, they're just, it's two words, but.
Okay, let's just do them now.
Um, page eleven of the packet, um, second to last paragraph, oh, my brain won't work. It's, it says counselor agrees with Mayor McBride, and I believe that was Counselor Rivera. It would be great to put her name there.
Okay.
Gladys, please tell me if that wasn't you.
Yes, that was.
Um, great, and then on page twelve, first paragraph, um, second to last sentence, she suggested it should be a meandering stroll, um, and it was, should not be a meandering stroll. So I just feel like that's a substantial, important, important word, should not be a meandering stroll.
Should not, okay.
Yes.
Add not between should and be.
Yeah.
All right.
Um, and that is it.
All right, um, anyone else need anything changed on the consent agenda or removed? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda with the two changes, um, from Counselor Saunders?
And I move we approve the consent agenda with the two changes mentioned tonight.
A second that.
I have a motion by Megan and a second by Jessica to, uh, approve the consent agenda with the two, um, small changes on, uh, council minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Chair vote tied. All right, uh, regular business items, um, resolution twenty twenty-one seventeen, declaring property surplus and authorizing sale. All right.
Okay, we're, we're back to it.
Back to it. Okay, didn't take long.
So, uh, Mayor McBride, I'll, I'll add his, uh, staff report for the resolution here in the regular business item. Uh, just the, the connection to the two thousand fifteen housing needs analysis that's written into the whereses. Um, that included, uh, a third strategy, which, um, we were, it was really the primary focus of our efforts right now as far as finishing out the directions set in that two thousand fifteen housing needs analysis, which is the development of, um, bricks and sticks affordable housing. And we've, uh, purchased property on Rand Road. Uh, we know that there's still a funding gap and, uh, one of the defined actions in the two thousand fifteen housing needs analysis was locate alternative sources of funding. Um, and so, uh, we've, uh, been suggested in the past that we look for city-owned properties that could be marketable. And, uh, so that's, uh, what we've done here and brought to you as an option to, um, uh, generate some sale proceeds that, um, then is, uh, as directed in the resolution will be earmarked, uh, directly for, um, uh, that seven eighty Rand Road or another affordable housing development. So this isn't, uh, just going into the general fund, it's specifically for, uh, for affordable housing. Um, and, uh, to maybe address, uh, why, uh, it's written in here to just authorize staff to execute. Because that really gets into creating a streamlined sale process and negotiations where the, the, uh, the, um, property owners that we're working with know that we, they're only talking to one person and they're not, uh, while negotiating with us, kind of still continuing to plead their case via emails, business from the audience, trying to basically, uh, you know, um, work, work with multiple people at the same time, which can confuse the process. So if you, if it can be, um, if the policy direction can be sufficiently, um, described in the resolution, uh, it would be, um, much more efficient, streamlined, I think less confusing for all parties involved if staff can follow through and execute the sale. However, we are happy to bring it back, uh, as well if, um, council isn't even that level of detail.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. All right, um, does anyone want to start or have, um, comments on the resolution? Jessica?
I'll just say that I, I feel comfortable from the resolution that, that staff does understand the, the policy direction that I would be looking for and would, and also, you know, not being a real estate agent myself, uh, I am comfortable with staff, you know, using our policy direction to work with our real estate agent to make the best decision for the city and, and don't, don't feel that you need to bring it back, but at least that's my opinion.
Okay, thank you, Jessica. Mark?
Um, I, I mostly feel the same way that, that I think that once we get through with this, um, having staff be able to complete the negotiations and stuff is, is great. The only thing I really want to make sure that we agree on is that, that line for the tree preservation along the steps and that it doesn't end up being five feet from the steps but when we come back. And, and right now it's, I don't know if it needs to be in this resolution or if it needs to, um, or the, the lot lines come back to us for approval. I, I, I don't know how to do that, but I wa, I want to see some assurance of that one line.
Okay, uh, there, there's no ambiguity there. It's, uh, based on, we measured it. Uh, we brought in a tree surveyor specifically for this purpose. It's going to be, uh, the rain, the rain outline of the, uh, first row of oak trees.
Sure.
Uh, that's twenty-five feet.
I think that, that drawing is clear, but the resolution doesn't, doesn't hold you to that drawing, right?
Oh, so it maybe, uh, maybe it would be sufficient tonight, uh, if, if that, um, be shared by the rest of the council, um, and then that to just, uh, insert that into the resolution.
So we can just have that as an exhibit?
Yes.
Which show right where the line is?
Yes.
Okay, that, that.
And it, it shows both easements. It shows the little house, the little house snippet plus the trees, so it comes with both.
Uh, it shows the house, but it doesn't show what the.
Because there would be, there would be a number exact. Well, there was, there's a number of feet from the stairs that goes basically kind of straight up on, on that line. There's a number that is associated with that, correct?
Yeah.
So many feet or whatever.
Yeah, so we met with the property owners this morning and what we talked about is right up to where there's like a, a ledge of some rocks.
I, I'm talking about the, the stairs.
Oh, the stairs.
The trees, the trees, the trees.
Oh, twenty-five feet, it's twenty-five feet. We could just say twenty-five foot buffer.
Oh, okay, twenty-five foot, so you have a number, okay.
Yeah.
All right, great, that's what we're, what we're going to talk about, right? Tim?
I agree with Jessica.
All right, Megan?
Um, I think in general, I agree with Jessica. I, I don't know how to do this in the public meetings. I don't want to do any numbers, but I guess like the one caveat would be like, if the number's too low, I don't want to give it up. I don't, I don't know how to decide that tonight or give a ground rule, um. And I guess I, um, you know, and thinking of the folks we, we heard speak tonight, I, I definitely see it from there and the value of selling a portion of the property. Um, and I guess on my end of maximizing the, the potential revenue, uh, you know, I, I see the easement being more valuable because then it can overlap with the, you know, the five-foot side setback versus moving the property line and also maybe in a setback. So that's maybe just an opinion. I, I'm not going to change the resolution from that.
Yeah, uh, Mayor McBride and, um, Counselor Zan, or Counselor Saunders, if, if that is all similar to, to Counselor Zan Miller's, if that's shared by the rest of the council, uh, you could create minimum, you could insert minimum amounts into the resolution that, um, we're not authorized to sell for any less than X amount.
I mean, I just, that feels terrible to say out loud that we would sell up to, you know, as low as that amount. Like, I don't want to do that in a public process. So I'm going to shut up.
Eric?
Sure, so, I guess I may have, I may have a minority view, um, and let me say as a preference, or as a preference, it's in, in no way, uh, any sort of negative reflection on what I think is the height, highest capability we, staff we have. And in fact, you may recall, I recuse myself to not elect or to make the decision on who we picked as our real estate agent because I have a professional relationship with him. He's probably one of the best commercial real estate agents, uh, in the region. But having said that, I guess I approach it with this philosophical notion that this is a community asset and that there should be some layer of sunlight to deal with maybe some of the concerns that have been already stated. Uh, and I reminded of, we did have a few years ago the sale of property behind that, it was called the Butler Bank Building. And there were just community concerns about that that were frustrated and I think it just can amplify those concerns. those concerns when there isn't a public forum for the community to just touch base on the sale of a piece of community property. So I guess if there's a way to build in a final touch, you know, subject to final approval, that doesn't involve negotiations, even a direction to councillors not to involve ourselves in the process, because I agree that that can create problems and we don't need to make this a seven, eight, nine way negotiation. That's not my intention. I guess I just approached it from the philosophical perspective that there needs to be a public process associated with the final decision making. And I just have that concern.
So I've got a question. Because I think this is how it would work, but I'm not sure if if we said, you know, do what you can to fix these easements, sell some property, all of it, part of it, to part of some people, however you can figure it out. Try and get the best price you can for the city, so we have the most money for affordable housing. If we brought it back just for the final blessing, so to speak, that would be executive session because it's a real estate transaction, right? It's not going to be a pub, public, I mean, it will be public, officially public, but it would still be executive session, correct?
To talk about the terms, but if when I when I hear Eric saying is it come the final yes, sell, that would be an open session decision of the council that that he's recommending that you not delegate that to staff at this time. Is that right? That is, and I'm open minded about it. That's just my feeling. It's my minority view, so it's okay to just say no, Eric, but that's how my mind is.
Yeah, I just thought that if we brought it back after you've negotiated everything, just to kind of say, yeah, that's great. We would do it in executive session because it's a real estate transaction, but that's not true.
But we would, yeah, just as the city attorney said, we can could talk about the terms and discuss the terms in executive session, but no, no action of any kind can ever be made.
Right, and then we come out and then we say yes. If we're going to.
And I also had the the public noticing for for sale of public property under the Oregon revised statutes is the process we're doing today. It was a publicly noticed publicly noticed hearing which stated the property and property interests being sold, an estimate of their value and the method of sale. Those are the three elements in tonight's public hearing for people to weigh in. It was in the newspaper and also our real estate agent specifically notified all the people who would be specifically interested, you know, the underlying property owners and adjacent and the folks here to an insurance man.
What are thoughts on bringing it back? Others, anyone? Or you want to just, I mean, Eric has brought up a possible new idea. I think the rest of this has been everyone has said yes so far on all the rest of it. Eric just had one more idea to add on.
Two secs. If we, I agree with the gut reaction, just give us a yes, no at the end. But but when we've had a public hearing with a yes, no council, it hasn't been a soft to angst. If there is angst, it's it's more. So I I personally understand the suggestion, but I don't see it being making a big difference in that debate. But but of course, you know, we're all looking through our crystal balls, right, and trying to guess what would happen. So so I would, I would prefer to vote on a resolution without that part added. But if the rest of council was with you, it's not the end of the world.
Does that make sense? Yes, thank you.
I just want to check in with Gladys.
Thank you, Mayor. I am feeling very similar to councillor Meadows and Miller and councillor Saunders. I'm hoping that we can give staff a direct policy or policy direction tonight, minimum amounts, the exact foot buffer added into the resolution. And it sounds like staff has already done their due diligence as far as ensuring that the public is aware that this meeting was taking place tonight. And so I would feel comfortable with staff not bringing it back to us.
Thanks, Gladys. Anything else? You guys want to add anything? Are you good?
I guess for Mark's question, did you want to add in the language that says for tree preservation? The 25 foot easement, or did you want to just attach the?
Whichever is easiest from my perspective. Saying 25 feet from the east edge is okay, or saying see if it
What would be easier for staff or make it clearer in the end, you think?
So I may offer, you could say, so declaration of governance, conditions and restrictions and easements affecting Sherman parcels will be recorded with deeds and records of Hood River County prior to sale of Sherman Avenue parcels. And then insert with a minimum 25 foot no build area along the and if you want, you can go along the east portion of the Sherman Avenue parcel for the purpose of tree preservation.
That's very specific.
Someone wrote that down?
We can also state as, we can also state as as well described or something like that. Because I think he's got it written down. I'm personally good with the resolution the way it is. I guess I just, I feel like we've done different things with real estate in the past, but I think this particular situation can be handled by staff. I think staff will have the city's best interest in mind and be fair, too. So, you know, I think that, and they're very good at communicating with the parties that will be involved with all of this going on. So I I'm comfortable with them, without them coming back personally.
Right.
Yeah, go ahead.
So I've heard what folks have to say, and I think everyone's making it entirely reasonable. Appreciate people hearing me, hearing me out on these things. So I, I think I'm going to accept everyone's suggestions as correct and retract what I was suggesting earlier. But what's, and I have another thought, because what I'm remembering to the Butler Bank property is there's some suggestion that it was, you know, some sweetheart deal or something, which wasn't true. But that's the perception that some people can have. So the idea, and we all agree with this, if we could just add to the resolution that that the sale price would be, you know, at or above fair market value, which is a very basic statement. Just to inoculate anyone that might suggest that, because that's what's been in my back of my mind and some person perceiving otherwise. And this is the one and only hearing for this. So we can have executive session, public is participating in it. So I think what's coming to my mind is a thought to just provide direction to the resolution selling price should be at or above fair market value. Which is, and we all agree with that. Says.
So China changed the period for the result?
That upon reaching satisfactory terms of sale at or above fair market value. That's, that helps resolve the minimum, so thank you.
And it was no way, you will, you know, I have nothing but respect for you. Sometimes it's the public perceptions that haunt us.
It's much appreciated. Yeah, thank you.
Okay. I think we're, I think we're close. Does anyone want to try a motion? Motion's on page 31 with some new changes.
I move to approve resolution 2021-17 designation certain city-owned property and property interest surplus and authorizing mayor sale with the additions discussed tonight to add language about the tree preservation, 25 foot easement and to note that sale would be at or above market value.
All right. I'll second that. Okay, Jessica's made the motion and Megan has seconded the motion. Any additional discussion on the resolution? Okay. Do we need, we don't need, roll call or not on this?
You don't have to, unless you want to.
Okay, no. All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions? Those not in favor? And chair votes, yes. All right. Great, thank you, everyone. Yeah, thank you for coming. Right, Jackson Park baseball fencing.
Thank you, Mayor. We added this to regular business items rather than consent, simply because it was an item we didn't have a, we have not discussed with you. But it's fairly routine. It's a fence that needs to be replaced in your resolution in October about parks. And you said the city wants to be responsible for safety and health items related to parks. Enhancements, we're really looking for the community to take the lead on. This truly is a safety issue. So that's why it comes to you. It was not in the original budget for this year, but there are funds available. There are funds that were originally designated for tennis, for the tennis courts. But as you know, that project has been indefinitely delayed. It will definitely not be done this fiscal year. So just wanted to highlight those pieces. And then there's the suggested motions here. And I will also note this comes, it says it's from Mark Janik, who as you know, has left the city, but he is continuing to work for us on a remote basis. And he wrote this memo before he left. So thanks to Mark.
Right. Any questions, discussion?
I'm just going to say thank you. You addressed my question, which was how does this fit into capital improvement? Anything else?
Eric, did you have?
I'll just say briefly, I just noticed the the community is engaging more with that field than they had in prior years. It seems like adult co-ed softball is more popular in recent years. So I think this is great. I know there's a lot of kids around there, so I'm glad we're doing this. And hopefully we can engage with the community in a way to find a solution to tennis court, which is another treasure, pick the local asset.
Mark?
And then, you know, I think that we pretty clearly drew the line between community-driven enhancements and safety stuff. And so I think that this is an opportunity, you know, trusting that this is a safety thing to say, hey, ball field folks, you know, this is the first, you know, this is us chipping into the safety part of Collins Field and and this is your opportunity to help us organize the community-driven improvements that might also be needed at that site. So this, this could be a good model of how we encourage user groups to join in. And so that's all.
Yeah, that's a great idea. Yeah, I think we should, you know, reach out to the baseball community, softball community and let them know it's going to be happening and get some enthusiasm around it. So that'd be great. So there's a motion on page 35.
I move to award the Jackson Park baseball fencing contract to Pacific Fence and Wire for $40,000 and to approve $1,400 for purchase of a top cover for the fence.
I'll second. All right, Gladys has made a first. Thank you, Gladys. And Megan has seconded that. Additional discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Abstentions? No votes? Chair votes up? Yes. All right. Great. Miracle. So just a couple of things. In your packet, I put some information, it had staff put some information about the Carty generating plant. It's an natural gas plant. It was built alongside the Boardman Coal Fire Power Plant, which is now shut down. But they're, they're asking DEQ to allow them to emit additional pollution, basically. Which is, you know, it's a, it's a safety, it's a public safety thing. And also would be go against our energy resolution we have. But mainly, it's for me, it's, it's, it's a health thing. And so Riverkeeper asked me if I would write a letter saying that, didn't think that, to DEQ, saying I didn't think that was a great idea to allow them to emit a lot more pollution than they're, than they already have a permit for. And so I will personally do that, but I didn't want to speak for council. But I thought I'd bring it to you and see if you wanted to do that as a council, as a full council. So that's what my ask is this evening on that. So, Tim? Okay, all right. Others, anyone else?
I couldn't hear councillor Coonahan.
Pardon?
Because he wasn't speaking into his microphone.
Speaking into my microphone. What I said was is that I was encouraging the letter to come from the city.
That was my, my preference. Sorry about that, Gladys.
Okay, thanks, Tim. Megan?
So I guess I just had a couple of questions, because I have no background on this at all. So like the Q and A in here, that's from Riverkeeper or where?
That's from Riverkeeper. I met with Riverkeeper and I had a few questions when, you know, that I asked them when I was at that meeting. And then they got these, the answers back to me. And then I said, okay, I feel comfortable with this. But this is just the answers back that they gave me.
Okay, when you already had a bunch of information that I just
Yeah.
So it was very confusing.
Yeah.
Okay, and so then they are, I mean, I'm seeing carbon monoxide and volatile granite compounds. I'm not an expert, but are those greenhouse gases or they're also emitting greenhouse gases at an increased amount to impact the climate change resolution?
Yes, those, those would be things that would affect climate change, too. Yes. Yeah, VOCs are.
I mean, I get, I get the like air quality health thing. I just, I couldn't see the
Yeah, it's, it is both. It is both things.
Okay. Okay, let me mull. I think I had another question, but I forgot it.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Not that I can answer any questions you have, any better than I have, but.
Two things. One, my gut reaction when I read the packet before, you know, before coming was that this is the kind of stuff where, you know, saying we've already, you know, spoken for the, you know, for global warming and here's all these things and sort of leaving it at that was be my preference. The second thing is my understanding of reading the DEQ thing was that they're not actually basically, they've been doing this, emitting these things since they turned the thing on. And they just didn't, don't have the permit for it. And so now they're changing the permit to cover their existing. So instead of increasing emissions, it's just like acknowledging or, or, you know, something like that. But it doesn't change the gist of this, like, we shouldn't be letting this stuff continue, right? That's, that's the, that's the sort of the bottom line that we're asking council to say. Come on, we should be past this by now, right? So I guess those are my, those are my two things.
Okay. Jessica?
I guess I like Mark's suggestion about kind of leaning on the resolutions that we've adopted and talked about, like referencing those, and this is why we would not support this.
Yeah, and I think we have specifics enough in there that we can just reference it probably. Okay. Eric?
Anything further? Thank you.
Pardon?
Oh, nothing further?
Nothing, okay. All right. So I think oh, Gladys, Gladys. Sorry, I keep looking down the line and you're in front of me.
That's okay. Yeah, I mean, I hear where where councillor's and Miller's coming from. But I, I guess, yeah, we're just acknowledging that this is still happening. So I don't have any concerns.
So I mulled a bit more. Sorry, I'm
Okay, go ahead, Megan. It's to take too long, but it's fine. Go ahead.
Well, I, so I guess, I mean, to, to Mark and I think Jessica's
Well, I, so I guess, I mean, to, to Mark and I think Jessica's points, I, I do think, you know, both our racial and social equity resolution and the climate. I forget, but the, the climate resolution.
Yeah.
I think, I think kind of like really knows back to these a bit, covers basically everything you're trying to say, but I think in a little more. The language we've already approved. Um, so I, I guess I'm, I'm comfortable with the letter, but I'd like to see it kind of. Make more sense with those resolutions and reference them.
Okay. I think that's what I'm hearing from the bulk of people saying, if we're gonna do a city letter. With all of our names on it, that we just, we need to be referencing those resolutions that we already approved. Is that, is that where I'm getting, getting? Okay.
Yes.
Okay, alright, let's, we'll go that direction then. Alright, thank you guys. Um. Congressman Blumenhauer, congressman, representative? I can't remember. Um, who will be our new, um, representative, uh, soonish? Talked to me about the new, um, potential. Protections for Mount Hood and some protections for in the gorge. And he's taking public input right now from electeds. So it's, it's not, nothing's a done deal of any sort, but there's, he has a public, uh, comment period out and I think. You guys got that, didn't you? And I just, you know, give him some comments if you have any, please. He just asked me to pass that along that. Um, he'd like to hear from you guys. I was anxious, I was very happy to see that there is potentially going to be some. Compensation, I guess, maybe for a search and rescue, you know, because that's always been kind of a sore spot for the county. That, you know, if we have a lot more wilderness, we have a lot more protection. We have all this place where all these people get to go and isn't it great? But then people get hurt and then the county has to pay for search and rescue. Um, and so there may be some kind of, uh, compensation, compensation in this bill to help with that. So that was, that was a really. Big item, I know, for the county. Um, but I don't think all of the language is set in stone yet, so. Leave him a comment if you guys have one. Um, the Bi-State Working Group met today, almost three hours. We're, we're getting there, we're getting there. Um, but we had a date not too long ago, but it was, it was a good meeting. We had a great meeting. And, um, I am not gonna be there potentially on the tenth of January and Jessica's my alternate. I've asked her and she'll, said she's just gonna try and get to that meeting. So we're, we're just carrying on with that. That's all I've got. Uh, council call. Tim?
Thanks, Mayor. I don't have it really anything in specific. But I will say that, um. With the holiday season that I'm always thankful. Be living in, in the city of Hood River and I'm thankful for our community. And thankful for all of you guys and thankful for the city staff. Um, and just thankful in general. So happy holidays, everybody.
Thanks, Tim. Megan?
Well, thank you, Tim. We're thankful for you. Uh, and I agree with everything you said. Um, the Housing Task Force met again last week. Uh, I think there's, we're finally into like really substantive stuff. I think there's some big things brewing. I, my work schedule's been crazy, so I haven't had time to actually distill it into a useful form for you all, but I will be bringing something back hopefully in January to like. Get you all up to speed and I'm, I'm hoping to spend some time on it then. Um. And I think that is it.
Great. I forgot, I forgot a couple of things. Sorry, you guys. I'm gonna, I'm gonna break in here again. Sorry, I just remembered. Um, oh, um. Between six and nine o'clock, Wednesday evening is the, uh, fire truck parade. With all the lights and the sirens. So if you guys hear sirens, it's not a fire. It's not an ambulance. It's probably a parade coming down your street. Um, so that, that's kind of fun. But I think we just do it one, one time. So it's just this Wednesday, this Wednesday. No, no. Oh, and we have, um, change, we are changing our work session. Our yearly planning work session to February nineteenth. We wanted to make sure we had plenty of time to get our, uh, public input surveys out to everyone. And so we've, we need to move that back. So February nineteenth at the fire station. Um, oh, and the other thing, and I, I'm not sure. Will, um, Mid-Columbia Economic Development give us information, but Marla is leaving. The end of February, I think it is. And so, um, I think she's gonna go back to graduate school. And she's been our person working at Mid-Columbia Economic Development District on our energy plan since it started. She was an intern and then. Um, got hired to do that work and so, um, they'll be looking for another person. So maybe we could put it on our website that. Just get the word out. Alright, that's it.
Okay, now, Mark.
Oh, Megan.
And I might butcher this, so hopefully staff will correct me, but I believe free downtown parking started today. So, wanted to make sure folks were aware of that. Great. Mark?
I was gonna talk about free tar parking.
Oh. Stole it.
No, I, I, I wanted to give props to the city and to the mayor for the tree lighting ceremony. It was, it was quite nice and it wasn't pouring rain and, and it was pleasant to see everyone out there. And it's, it's one of those. Um, I love Hood River moments and when you, when you just see all the people and there were bunches of little kids and. It was, it was awesome. It, it makes me proud to live here and, um, extra proud to be able to serve in, in this way. Um, Christmas Project, we, i- is going again this year. This is the ninety-ninth. Year of, of helping families in need in the, in the county and, and, uh, we're, we're giving out, um. Uh, gifts to seven hundred families that, that need it. Um, so, uh, Counselor Gladys and. Counselor Tim were able to help out this last weekend in the rain and it, it's another beautiful thing about the community and, and, and I know every. And, you know, everyone else is, uh, highly supportive of that and always has been and it's just a great thing. And I can't think of anything else. Besides, the timbers got beat.
Jessica?
Um, I will share, yeah, so, uh, the good thing about Marla giving a lot of lead time and she's also willing to stick around and help. Uh, train up a new person, so that'll be good.
Oh, nice.
Um. Uh, we, so Mid-Columbia Economic Development District has released a draft of the five-year economic development strategy for a public comment. I can share that link with Abigail. Um, it's open through Ju- Ja- January seventh. And, uh, we are also doing a photo contest that closes December twentieth to try to. Uh, get some fresh images for the document. Uh, so any photographers out there? Um, M C E D D dot org and there's bits about that on both of those things on the homepage. And then just to say happy holidays to all of you. I mean, I'm grateful for you and also for city staff and. Glad to have Abigail here this time of year especially and, uh, that's it.
Eric?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I'll jump on the bandwagon for thanks for city staff with respect to the. Holiday tree lighting and the whole event. It is one of the more special events of the whole year for us all to come together and enjoy that, that moment. I will share my, my son, who I love it, he still has this mind of a child. If you notice, there are some presents under the tree. Um, and I didn't want to talk about what a fake present was to him at his age, but he wondered if those go to city council or the mayor. But I said, no, that's not how it works. And so maybe I'll have the discussion about the Christmas project that you were describing, but. We have these symbolic presents under the tree and I, I've assured my son that we are not the beneficiaries of whatever those might be. On more nuts and bolts stuff, uh, and it's, seems a little silly for me to give the briefing about the bridge to the, uh, to the mayor. And especially Jessica with Roland Mcquette. But let me just say briefly, we have, over the last ten days or so, there's been a number of meetings. Um, relating to just kind of, I think, classic politicking for bridge dollars under the new federal bill this, uh. I wrote it down here, the, the investment or the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act, I I J A. And I have a number of slides which I, I actually, well, there's hours worth of slides if you wanted to see it, but I, I have and I'll email these around. I think there's four really good ones. That just kind of distill it all as it concerns our bridge. So, um, the ACT group, which we've talked about before. Which, uh, I sort of am your representative there, had a number of meetings leading up to two meetings that took place with ODOT. But, uh, this group, which includes, um, Chair Oats, John Davies is, is a member of this group. Uh, Megan Ramey, uh, and Port Commissioner from Cascade Lock's name, Jess Groves. We all met and sort of strategized about how can we as a group try to advocate for, for public dollars and. Uh, part of it was just kind of getting up to speed on what's going on, but there is, under this bill, Oregon is set to get, uh. One point two billion dollars. That will be earmarked for some kind of discretionary dis- decision-making by ODOT for additional influx for infrastructure projects. And of that, um, the slide says a quarter billion. So that's a two hundred and fifty million dollar investment in, in bridge maintenance. Uh, replacement and, and repair. And so it's basically two hundred and fifty million dollars debt that's up for grabs. Um, and there's more details, but what happened at these meetings is there's basically advocacy. So. Uh, the mayor, the mayor testified. Um, I said some things, Jess Grove, some people spoke up and just. We're all on this long list. And in fact, Mark, I joke, you get credit for being there because, and I didn't tell you this, Mayor, but when, right before I testified. Mark and our neighbors, Mark walked by my home window and I waved to him from the Zoom call. So you were there for a second. But we were testifying in favor of this, uh, of this. And, and the basic suggestion is that. Our bridge, you know, it is this beautiful iconic bridge and I personally hope that we can, and Mark and I had a discussion about this, uh, actually on the sidewalk. In front of my house and his, but if we can hopefully have a, a, uh, somehow, and it'll be as, as iconic, but to have some stylistic bridge here of some kind. But in any event, we have to get it funded before we have any bridge at all. So, um. The, the, the basic thought is to try to at least secure twenty million of that if we possibly can to help. Um, with the next phase of engineering that's coming up, um, with respect to getting to, I think, thirty percent design, um, for the bridge. So that has happened and there will be more opportunities for advocacy and probably not just from us, from all of us. Uh, but on this, you know, I'm thinking of, um, the second meeting with ODOT, there was myself, the mayor. Um, Megan Ramey spoke well of the project, um, and I think Jess Grove spoke as well. So. We'll spread it out and probably I'll take turns, but we'll each have a role in advocating for these public dollars. I, I probably didn't do it quite justice, but there's a.
And I thought the funniest thing was, is that very last person that spoke, were you on the call at the very, very end? He was from the coast, I think, advocating for Highway six or something. And he said, and you know that Hood River Bridge, you guys really do need to give them money. That's a great bridge. And I was like, yes. He wasn't even from our area. I was like, oh my gosh, that was, it's just a. Exclamation point. I thought that was great.
The other thing for Bill, just one little anecdote, Bill, if you can hear us, yes, but, uh, the, the person who set up the, the Zoom meeting named everybody in the meeting. Was it Brandon Bauer or something?
Yeah.
So everyone had the same name. So it was really hard to call on the right person, but everyone had the same name, Travis Brower.
Oh.
Higher Zoom meeting of two hundred and fifty people.
Yeah, well, that, actually, I think there was, at one time, there was three hundred and fifty-five people on that call. Yeah, yeah, it was crazy. Yeah, it was hurting cats. Anything else, Eric?
No, thank you.
Okay, Gladys?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, similar to Counselor Zan Miller, I just want to express. My gratitude and appreciation for the Christmas project. Um, it was a pleasure to volunteer my time and to go. Um, support some families in this time of need. Um, so thank you all to the volunteers, to the board. Uh, yeah, thanks for doing that. It makes me feel very proud. To live in a community where we do come together in times of need. Uh, I appreciate all of you and everything that we have achieved together. And that includes city staff, uh, for this year and, um, excited for this next coming year and continuing to work with you all.
Thank you, Gladys. And I just want to recognize, and I don't have it in front of me, but, um, Gladys. Was awarded a very prestigious award, actually. Um, it was on the front page of the Hood River News and, um. For, for her advocacy and work during COVID, um, for one community health. Um, she was instrumental in getting a lot of things done there. And so, um. Thank you for, for all your work that you're doing on your, on your other job besides city council. Gladys, appreciate it. Alright, um, so we, we are gonna go, if we don't have anything else, I'm gonna go into executive session. So I'm gonna read a script for that. City Council will now meet in executive session pursuant to Oregon revised statutes. One nine two point six six oh one E to conduct deliberations with persons designated by the governing body to negotiate real property transactions. Representatives of the news media and designated staff are allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the room and we will end the public broadcast. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during the executive session. Except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decision may be made. Or final action taken in executive session. The exess- executive session is anticipated to last. Twenty to thirty minutes? No, not that long even. Forty-five minutes to an hour. Okay, at the end of the. At the end of the executive session, the city council meeting will be adjourned and no action will be taken. We will now discontinue the live feed and recording. Alright. Yeah, let's go, well, um, well, let's just take a five-minute break.